Okay, good evening. This is Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, meeting of the Town of Burrow and Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. That banned t-shirt that you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share with your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever, and possibly wind up as a TikTok video that will be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. The Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Janet Campbell.
Here.
Tom Sanford here. Anticipated speakers on the agenda. We don't have any anticipated speakers, but we will respond in kind when they raise their hand or ask to be elevated. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:34 PM Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board and is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Burrow website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening, convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join in this meeting. Ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. And lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, the first order of business, I will entertain a motion that we accept the minutes of the Planning Board meeting held on 1/26/2021.
I'll move the minutes from that date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I have to do this by roll call vote, so when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative or negative if you don't want to vote for them. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Oh, she's muted.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. The motion to accept the minutes as presented is voted in the affirmative. Okay, the first order that I had on the agenda was to open or review any mail or any bills that came in. There are no bills that came in. And the mail basically was a whole bunch of notices for hearings from other towns. There was nothing of real note for us to really get concerned. The only thing that there was, a note from the Board of Selectmen, Burrow and Board of Selectmen, of a public hearing notice that will take place. Oh, it already took place, so I guess that's doesn't concern us anymore, about Ingrid adding additional poles along Bridge Road and River Road West. But we missed it.
Wouldn't have been any point anyway.
No, not really. I just want to keep everybody informed. So that's about it for that. The next order of business that I had was to see if we can wrap up with any of the warrants that we had for the annual town meeting. The warrant, I guess, is now open, and we only have until next week sometime, and then it closes. So we got to get our ducks in a row. And do we want to venture on trying to set a date, hearing dates, or?
Or? A date for what?
Hearing dates for some of the articles that we have.
Oh, right. Do we need to do that in order to get the warrant stuff, right?
We just need to hold the hearings at some time before the town meeting.
Right, because right now there is no guarantee the town meeting will be that first week in May.
True.
So we should probably wait until
Well, we got to have-
March, April.
Yeah, we can. We need to have two weeks prior to the meeting, so we can have two consecutive notices in the paper. So we just bear that in mind. Is there, Tim, is there any modifications to any of those, or are we pretty much set with the language? We're just carrying over from last time, right?
You're muted.
If we were to hold a hearing on the 13th of April, let's say, yeah, which would give us, then the decision would have to be made at our March 23rd meeting.
Okay.
And is there any, is there, are there any ramifications from having, let's say, we have the hearing on April 13th, and then town meeting gets moved a month?
We're still all right. We'd still be all right. Yep, that would still be fine.
Is there a time limit?
Yeah, there may be, but it would be more significant than anything we'd be faced with right now, so.
I mean, we could postpone the decision. I just didn't know if we had an appetite to throw a couple of dates around or not.
Well, I mean, there's one, the 13th of April, our regular scheduled meeting, which means, you know, we just need to tighten things up over the course of the next four weeks, you know.
Is there any, we're going to put the, as they're written now, we're going to put them in the warrant. We're not making any modifications to what we've already done, right? The language we were okay with.
I think was still okay, and I asked Lynn Bryan if she had any thoughts, and I'll chase her again, but she didn't balk, I don't believe, so that was the main.
Right, so the only question I have is, we were going to do the river bridge
We agreed.
Change for them.
We agreed, because it was a special town meeting, and it was going to require 100 signatures, we agreed that we would place the article on the warrant.
Right.
They only need 10 signatures for an annual.
Oh, okay.
And I noticed Margaret sent the representative from Duncan a note saying that, you know, he could go ahead and get the 10 signatures for the warrant article they wanted to have regarding drive-throughs, so I don't have any trouble suggesting to Chris and Matt that they should go and get the 10 signatures.
Agreed.
10 isn't an overwhelming number.
No, it's not. And I think that that was part of that email. She sent an email to both parties, the Senes and to, what's his name, Joe Murray. She sent emails to both of them suggesting that they, you know, collect the signatures and put it on as a citizen position. So I think that's-
So, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I do too.
I mean, we were trying to be nice, but it wouldn't be a good habit for us to get into. Not that we don't want to be nice, but-
But there's no need. I mean, 10 is not a high bar, and they can get that fairly easily, so.
Right, and a pandemic doesn't necessarily make a precedent.
Right.
Hopefully, anyway.
So the only question-
Eloise is raising her hand.
Okay.
I believe she's, yep.
As far as them doing a petition because of the pandemic, they are allowed to, like, 10 pieces of paper, and everybody just signs one.
Okay.
Awesome.
So, that shouldn't be an issue, and I thought if I told you, you could pass it along if you needed to. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Oh, Eloise again.
Oh, no, I was just lowering my hand.
Oh.
So we could be okay with-
I wanted to ask Eloise, did we do any of the, did we do the the Economic Development Committee appointment by Planning Board at a town meeting already?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
It was on for the special, I think.
And, but did, and okay, and then did we do the one in regard to residential care facilities? We didn't do that one either.
No.
And the driveway-
One of these from last annual.
Enic Roads Act, we can't do. The question is, do we want the town meeting to deal with the ARC bylaw, which is pretty substantial in terms of the number of parcels? Should we just wait on that one?
I would suggest that you submit it, and then if we have to because of the pandemic, then you could always pull it for another one.
Okay.
Hold it just in case.
Or we can pass a wall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So Eloise, is everybody kind of going forward with the, on the premise that this will be a regular town meeting until we know better?
I have no clue.
Oh, okay. You're not in the know?
No, that's fairly common. I did attend the selectmen's meeting last night, and they, and Chris just said it was a little too early to make those determinations.
Sure. So people are erring on the side of putting their stuff on, and then we'll pull it if we need to.
Well, I mean, you know, last year we were lucky, we were able to hold it outside, you know, nobody got electrocuted, there was no massive thunderstorm. So, you know.
Yeah.
It was also late in June, too.
Yep. You know, it's a crapshoot what you should do.
Right.
Agreed.
Well, it's easier to put stuff on and then pull it than it is to, you know, regret. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a lot of work if you don't follow through, if you can't follow.
Right.
Right.
And I don't know if, when that new law, that new zoning law that goes through for housing, instead of a two-thirds, I think it's now down to a majority. But I don't know if it's just restricted to potential houses.
Right. Didn't we get some clarification about what that was, how that was going to pertain to us? I don't remember the answer, but I remember talking about it.
It's just that if somebody wants to change zoning so that they can put in housing, I believe now it has gone to the, to a 50% vote as opposed to two-thirds for zoning. But I don't know what the effective date is.
So that's a state, they state lowered that bar, right?
Correct.
Right.
Is there any way that we as a town can do home rule where we, no, we're basically screwed. Okay.
So finding out when it kicks into effect may or may not impact what you want on the warrant.
Okay.
For changing zoning to ARC and all that bit.
Can I be the newbie here for a second?
Sure.
What is the ARC bylaw?
It's the Agricultural Recreation Conservation District.
Okay.
And what it does is, it adds an extra layer of protection. So pieces that are under a CR or APR, we've tended to put in that, or town-owned conservation land has been put into that. And so every so often, we do some housekeeping where we try to identify the parcels that have been protected and haven't been included in ARC before, and then do a sort of a wholesale adjustment and include them. So that's why there's so many. And it just means the town meeting has voted to put those into a zoning district that allows agricultural recreation conservation uses only, so.
Thank you. So I mean, it sounds like it's an important housekeeping thing, especially, you know, if it hasn't been done for a while. So I do think we should, my opinion would be, I would make a motion that we would put it in the warrant. And with the, you know, knowing that we can pull it if we need to.
Towards the end of the warrant.
When everyone's tired.
Most of the time, it's not, no one objects. You know, it's already protected land. It's just reaffirming the fact that, you know, it's protected land.
You haven't lived in town that long, Tom.
Huh?
You have not lived in town that long. They can take the most innocuous things and fight for them for hours.
That's true. It's true. All right, so if we've exhausted that part of it, the other thing that I had on there is the, we had a presentation last time from Carolyn and her compadres, compadre. And should, is there any next text that the Planning Board has to do? Or should be doing? Do we need to take a vote to support this, or do we need to?
I mean, a vote of support would be nice.
Are you going to, you have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
And you haven't set a date for that yet?
I do not believe so.
Do you want to, what are you thinking, Timmy? Send a letter of support to the, for them, for that, to be read at that hearing?
Yeah, I was wondering both ways, whether we wanted to send a letter now, or whether we wanted to wait and have the hearing and send a letter they could use at town meeting, but based on what was said, you know, I mean, there may be some modifications that we'd even suggest based on the hearing.
Right, so the only, and I think this was definitely being talked about when John and I met with you two weeks ago, that we met with Mike, Paul McCalk, and Peter Hoffman. And Mike Sawyer definitely reiterated that he would like to see either mediation or arbitration. We're trying to, I think John has already asked for permission to talk to town council to see which mediation or arbitration, which would be the thing that we should add. But instead of having the appeals process go directly to Superior Court, that there would be this intermediate step. So we're working on the language to add that. And, I mean, that's really the big thing that is going to be changed or added to it.
I mean, we could send a letter that say that we support the basic premise and that we're, you know, we understand there may be some modifications, so that a final endorsement would come when we saw the final draft. But we could certainly say, you know, in principle, we support the intent and that, you know, we feel that it ought to be supported at a town meeting. And but we're waiting, because, I mean, if there are some modifications, you know, it'd probably be wise for us to see what those are, and also hear what people have to say, so.
Right.
Right.
So, I mean, I could make a motion that says that, you know, we support the change in principle, and that, you know, we anticipate that some modifications might be forthcoming, and that, you know, we're eager to see the final draft and believe it ought to be supported at a town meeting. Based on the input from the hearing and the adjustments that the Conservation Commission might make, something like that.
I'll second that.
I would hope so.
Wholeheartedly.
Any further discussion? No, hearing none. I will ask you to vote on the motion to support the Conservation Commission presentation, wetlands by law changes that we heard. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Yep. No problem. So we basically chewed through all of the hot button items, with the exception of Tim wanted to talk to us about the consortium, the housing, it's not Housing Partnership. What's the, yeah.
So we've constantly been looking for some third party that might support
Yes.
the affordable housing units and the Housing Partnership here in town. And we dealt with Central Mass, and they're finally getting something off the ground, but it'll take a while yet. And it's probably going to represent towns that are west of Worcester rather than east of Worcester, although that remains to be seen. But we were pointed in the direction of this Assabit Regional Housing Consortium, which is supported by the Metro West Collaborative Development, which operates out of, I think they have space in Hudson. So there, the member towns to the organization are Littleton, Boxborough, Harvard, Hudson, Stowe, Devens, Bolton, Lancaster. And they, we've been listening in on their conversations over the last three months, and we did say to them, we were interested in being part of the consortium if they'd accept us. And when they met last time, they talked about it, but they didn't act. And then today they met again, and Chris Keefe and I listened in, and at the end of the meeting, they had a conversation about whether they wanted to vote with us there or not, and they said, oh, yeah, sure, you can hang around. And they voted, and it was unanimous to let us in. Which is a good sign, because with the CPA money, we're really going to be able to help the Housing Partnership and Eloise with some support and opportunity, I think, particularly working with this group, because they'll monitor the subsidized housing inventory. And that means that when units are in jeopardy of being lost, they'll, it'll be a wider net that they can cast to try to find, you know, qualified applicants and stuff for affordable units. Now, there's an assessment on an annual basis, which, you know, we may find that we can use some of the Community Preservation Act money in the future, but that's not available yet. And so Eloise, of course, has a mammoth amount of money in her housing pool from Highland Commons and others. And so, but we control it. So I was going to propose that the Planning Board authorize the expenditure of up to $8,000 for the fiscal year 2022. So it'd be available in July, essentially, and that's when we'd become a recognized member of the organization. It would be in that fiscal year. And that would cover you know, the basic monitoring and regional activities and local support. So, you know, they'd give us a certain number of hours. For instance, Hudson's got 35 hours of local support, and then 65 hours of monitoring, because they've got a significant number of units that need to be watched over, and that would be true of us as well. So I think 8,000 ought to be, Hudson's figure is 8,400, Boxborough's 8,000, and Stowe's about seven. So I think if we set up to eight, I think we'd be fine.
And that's, that's the number of hours per year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in Hudson's case, it's 112 hours.
Right.
And they get $75 an hour, which in today's world is a bargain, probably, so.
Yeah.
It's cheap. Senes get.
So I'd like to make that motion.
I would second that.
I didn't know if Eloise wanted to chime in.
Thanks. Oh, thanks, Tim.
That's all you want to say?
No. It has grown beyond our skill level. And you have to look at reports, and I like the potential of them having backup people so that when a unit goes on sale, we can get somebody in and not lose it like we have with loss four from the beginning. And I think that makes it valuable, in my opinion.
Yeah, and if every single one of these towns that we're talking about participating with is bigger, some bigger by far, are using a service like this in order to help them, it's no reason for us not to utilize the same service. And, you know, we have the funds to do it. It's not like it's going to be a hardship to pay for this. And I think what we discovered through the CPA was that the minute some money began to flow toward the Recreation Committee, they suddenly had people show up that wanted to participate on the committee. So I think the same may be true of the Housing Partnership. Instead of having a slim skeletal crew, the fact that there's money to help support some of their objectives probably will mean that there may be some people that step forward to participate. So that's a good sign.
I hope so.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I will ask you to vote on the motion made by Tim to authorize up to 8,000. Hearing none. I will ask you to vote on the motion made by Tim to authorize up to eight thousand for dues for the 2022 Berlin's assessed portion of the, I forget the.
Assabit Regional
Consortium.
Housing Consortium, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
We should put in an acronym for it.
Yeah.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell. Janet.
She appears frozen. Is that, or she's really good at sitting still? Oh, 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 there she is.
Can you hear us? Janet, can you hear us? Janet, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't see you, but I can hear you. Now I can see you.
I can see you. Excellent. Can, we, we were asking for a vote, so on Tim's motion.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Tom Sanford, aye. So, the motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you.
I went out to Japanese for a while.
Okay. Is there any other timely items for us to discuss? Because that's about all that I had on the agenda for, for, for tonight. Anybody else have anything they want to add or talk about or? No?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that's waving their arms and hands frantically to have something said?
Ornella did raise her hand.
Okay, can you?
Let me, yeah, allow her to talk. There we go.
Hi.
Hi, Ornella. How are you?
I'm good. How y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. Can you guys see me too, or can you only hear me?
We can only hear you.
Oh, that's good. All right. Always better that way. Um, so I just had a quick question. I know you probably covered your Warren articles last meeting, but I, I saw a little late and then I saw it was on the agenda for tonight, so I thought I'd, I'd hop on. I did send an email like around six-thirty summarizing what my question was, but I'm not sure if it gets to you guys when it, when I send it to the Planning Board at townofberlin.com, but I think I sent it to that and I had Tim's email and someone else's, I think maybe Jay, but I'm not sure if he's still on the Planning Board. Um, but in essence, I really was just asking if any of your articles were going to contain the one we discussed last year before COVID hit. You had all planned to place an article placing a maximum cap on the number of marijuana retailers in town. I know it didn't make it on the special, you know, the special town meeting and I could understand that. I was just wondering if you were gonna move it forward to this one or not.
I believe it's, it's one of the ones that are going to be on the warrant. And it's in the same format as what we had before. And it was a, a cap, I think of two.
Yeah, it was probably three, I hate to say. Um, well, I'd love it for, for it to be two, but it depends on the number of liquor licenses.
Correct.
I believe according to last year's numbers, it was, we had fourteen liquor licenses, which is crazy. I don't know why we need so many, but we had fourteen liquor licenses and based on that, twenty percent of fourteen would be two point eight. So, you can't have a cap that's lower than twenty percent of the number of liquor licenses. That, that is off premise. Hold on. I don't know if it's, now I forget if it's off or on premise liquor licenses. I'm reading it right now. Whichever the case may be, we had fourteen at the time. I'd love it if that number went down, but you would know if that's changed at all. But if it hasn't, then it's two point eight. And you can make it two point eight and then it kind of defaults to two. But there may be something in state law and I think there might be saying that you have to round up. I mean, again, I'd love to see it at two. I just wouldn't want, but that's probably something the town council can, can advise you on. But, um, but I'm glad to hear that you're moving it forward. I mean, anything we can do to, to stop the bleeding is great. But in my email that I sent you, well, at least that I sent to the Planning Board at Town of Berlin, do, do you guys see those emails?
Yeah, we usually do, but Jay's the one that monitors it and he's not here tonight, so.
Okay, as long as it, you know, he'll see it eventually and you guys will read it. I, I just, um, I did put in the correspondence to the most recent studies that I, I think would be interesting. It's just they show the link between the density of retail outlets and the incidence and the increase in youth use and young adult use. So, I just wanted you guys to see that and, and to know that you are kind of moving in the direction of science. And so, the studies are all showing that. So, I think it would be prudent as a town to do that. So, I appreciate that. I also put an op ed in there that you might want to read from a Washington legislator. That's very, very interesting. So, that's it. All right, good. I just thought it'd be easier to chat with you about it than it would be to, you know, to do it all online. All right.
No problem.
I just sent Ornella's email that I got to all you guys directly, so you'll have it. And in the Warren article, we said two, so we'll check with town council.
Love to see two. I would love that, but I'm.
I mean, if, if they only say, we can say two point eight, I'd, I'd be happy with saying two point eight, which would, in essence, leave it at two. So, you know, what the hell?
Yeah, the roundup might only be, it's hard, however it's worded in the law, it might just be a suggestion. It may not be, you know, officially the law, but all right, well, I appreciate that. Thanks for forwarding it, Tim. And if you guys, you know where to come, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to help. All right, thanks. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Aye.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy if we get the capital two point eight or whatever it is, whatever the ratio is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Phase me in at least, that's fine.
No, I, the site at Bannadore that was being considered by one group ran into a roadblock because DCU and the, and the city of Marlborough objected. They, they said that the way the state law reads, access to a, a retail use for marijuana would, would not be allowed through a zone that wasn't allowing that use. And because that access through, next to DCU through Marlborough isn't a zone in Marlborough that allows it, it, it wouldn't be permitted. So, the proponent is, is looking for other sites.
In Berlin?
Yeah.
I gotta buy.
So, right now they're looking at Bobby Taylor's piece on Taylor Road, on Taylor Road and sixty-two.
Huh.
Because it's been foreclosed on and the bank auctioned it, but didn't find anybody that was interested. And so, they've taken it back and I, I think he's, they're looking at that as a possible site. I said, you know, you've, you've already got two retail uses just down the road and, and you know, that's something they'll certainly take into consideration, but it didn't seem to phase him immediately, so.
And they're looking for retail, not grow, correct?
Right. They were gonna use five thousand square feet at Bannadore, so. So, that's what I know about that.
Interesting. Okay.
Awesome. Motion to adjourn?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I was trying to think if, if there was anything in regard to River Bridge that needed to be.
They're meeting with a subgroup, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, you know, trying to get a handle on where they are in regard to funding. The, there's a, we went through a process called MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. And in that, we identified particularly natural, naturally occurring problems that might face the town. And many people talked about all these dead trees from gypsy moths dropping branches on the highways or the dam at, you know, the mill pond down here below Janet. And the fact that. Pardon?
We didn't drop many.
No, we didn't. And culverts, bridges, you know, undersized, that sort of thing. And the state has just come out with a, a new process for accessing the ten or a dozen different funding sources for infrastructure improvements and, and other, you know, like mass works and stuff like that. And so, there's, they, they've said to the towns, give us a list of your top five priorities for, you know, things that you want to address. And put them in a list. We'll evaluate them, move them along to the appropriate body that would entertain it as part of a, a funding challenge. And they'll get back to you as to whether they believe your, your, your project proposal is valid and, and viable. And so, there's been discussion about the, the bridge on River Road that Cenney's have got some responsibility for. The Five Corners that, at, in West Berlin, that sort of thing. They've talked about the, the dam below Janet.
The dam's already been classified by the state as dangerous or a hazard or some.
Right.
So, that's already on their radar.
So.
The one down here.
Yeah. I mean, I don't particularly see it as a mammoth threat. It's not going anywhere. It, it, it's, it's breached in a number of spots so that to me, it's.
We could, we could do a Saturday program, like everybody pick up a rock and take it down there. And it would be fine.
It'd be fine.
I've been thinking about doing it myself.
That's, I thought if I'd done that over the last fifty years, it'd be fine, right? Like you said. Anyway, so they're putting that list together. So, if, if you thought of issues that really need attention, you know, send, send ideas along to Margaret because.
Are these new issues or old issues?
No, these, I mean, the dam is an old one, the Five Corners is an old one, the bridge, you know, that's, that's old.
But you know, there's one that I think is really going to be a problem at some point. You know, the new cut through between the gas station and across the street down here at River Bridge. People, even though it says no left turn, because it's so easy, they can zoom out of there and they go straight across the traffic and then turn left. It's two ninety. And it really is a dangerous thing when you, they're moving like that.
Yeah. Good, all right.
But isn't.
I will straighten it out.
Tim, isn't the MVP program a climate change threat? Related?
Yeah, flooding, major storms, you know, I mean, that's why they, and, and natural catastrophe, I mean, you know, invasive species, you know, and all that sort of stuff. So.
Right.
That's where, you know, the dam, culverts.
But it's climate change.
Yeah.
Related.
Right.
Yeah.
Well.
And for us, you know, a significant number of issues are, are tied into that when you think about it, that are gonna cost us significance amount, significant amount of money, so. So, that's what they'll be doing. And that way, they'll be streamlined. The, the governor's goal is to create a streamlined approach to applying for those funds so that municipalities get a quicker response and, and instead of multiple applications in sort of a shotgun approach, you, you sort of work through the agencies and they guide you with some words of wisdom ahead of time. So, that's the hope anyway.
That would be great if it really worked that way.
Well, you know,
Sorry.
when you think about it, when, when they started the community compact, you know, and they said, if you want to participate in some of the funding opportunities, sign on and we did. And so, you know, we got some money for assistance in evaluating the, some of the town policies and stuff like that. We got money for complete streets and things, you know, so they did streamline the process and they, they've essentially, they've said, if you, if you do some homework ahead of time, you know, we'll meet you halfway and give you credit and help you with some assistance. So, we pulled in more money through some of those programs through the Baker administration than we had in a long time, so. I think this may work out that way, too.
That's excellent.
Have a nice time in wherever. Where you going?
Florida.
Key Largo?
Yeah, two nights in Miami, three nights in Key Largo and three nights in Fort Myers.
Gee, that's terrible.
I know. I'll, I'll be thinking of you guys.
Same postcards, you know?
Yeah. Tickets were so cheap. Oh, my gosh. We got two round trip tickets into one airport, out another, which is usually more expensive for less than four hundred dollars.
That's great.
Nonstop, you know, none of the nonsense of three layovers and so, yeah.
Good.
Very much.
Good time.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Any discussion? No, hearing none. I will ask you to respond in the affirmative, if you believe in it. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you all.